Welcome to the December 8, 2022 Agenda Setting Conference, I'm sorry, session for the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will call on Vice Chairman Adams for the invocation and pledge.
You just wait and see that. Look at my eyes, because I need to pray for some people in this room. Dear Father, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to assemble once again. Father, we come to your throne just asking for you to give us peace. Father, we'd ask you to bless those who have been more challenged with that power for those four days. Father, just look down on them and give them peace and comfort as they go through that disaster. Father, we ask you today that let us everything be done in peace and in order and decently in order, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chairman Adams. At this time, we will move on to our agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Not to the agenda itself. We did send out some updates, I believe, on Tuesday to the presentations, several presentations. But the agenda is good to approve.
Okay.
Madam Manager, are we still needing the closed session for economic development matters?
I forgot. Yes, we do need closed sessions for economic development. Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the closed session for economic development.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Move on to their approval of the minutes.
I don't think we got minutes. We didn't get any minutes for this meeting, so.
Okay, so we don't have any approval?
No approval needed at this time for any minutes. We will move on to our presentation. Madam Manager.
The Board of Commissioners included funding in this year's budget to complete a classification and compensation study. County employee recruitment and retention is one of your top priorities and one of the most urgent issues we see from an internal perspective to address. We plan to update the board periodically throughout the process, and I will turn it over to our Assistant County Manager, Brian Haney, to make her presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So I'm here today to provide an update regarding the issues the county has been facing in terms of recruitment and retention and the ongoing classification and compensation study. Particularly given the fact that we do have two new members on the board, I'd like to share some background on how we got to where we are, and I'd like to then turn it over to our Human Resources Director, Dominique Hall, to provide a brief update on the actual study and where we are in the study. There is a lot of information here, but I feel it's important to share it so that everybody knows what we're dealing with and that you have an opportunity to ask questions and additional information and data, so please bear with me. And if you have any questions during the presentation, please ask. So over the last decade, the county has completed three different studies related to classification and compensation. The last comprehensive study was completed in 2012, and the recommendations were implemented over three fiscal years. In 2019, the county undertook a study that looked at a limited number of classifications and included adjustments for those classifications over a three-year implementation period. And then in January of this year, an evaluative study was completed that gave us the challenges we currently face. This study revealed some things, but also provided confirmation on issues that we already knew or at least assumed about our compensation practices. So those included that the vast majority of county employees are clustered at or near the minimum of their pay grade. The standard procedure for posting vacancies is to post them at the minimum of the grade or on a very small range. And then there is no mechanism in place that moves employees through their grade over their careers with the county. The result is that most employees are hired at or near the minimum. This creates challenges for trying to attract and recruit experienced employees because hiring above the minimum could create equity issues with existing employees who are, again, at or near the minimum of their grades. Furthermore, the minimum salaries for many of our positions are not competitive with the market. The county has historically considered anything within 15% of the average market to be within market, which is something that is not helpful at this point. The only way, well, there are a number of ways to keep up with market, and those are typically done through cost of living adjustments and compensation studies like the one that's currently being undertaken. Finally, without a mechanism for moving employees through their grades, there has been the creation of significant compression issues with pay for longer tenured employees who are close to those, that of shorter tenured employees with the organization. Additionally, there is more severe compression within grades 55 through 61, as you recall, following the move to take all employees to a minimum of $15 an hour. We now have supervisors in some of those grades who make roughly the same amount as the employees they supervise. I do want to point out that in the current year's budget, the cost of living adjustment did move that minimum from $15 an hour to $15.30 an hour with the grade table. So this study from earlier this year really provided a foundational basis for the current study, which seeks recommendations to address these issues. So the last time I was before you to discuss our retention and recruitment issues, we hadn't finished the previous fiscal year, so I want to give you some data to show where we finished that in terms of our recruitment and retention. The county had a nearly 23% vacancy rate on June 28 of this year, meaning that out of 2,536 budgeted positions, 583 of those were vacant, or that nearly one out of every four positions was vacant. So this was the rate across all county departments, meaning that some departments did have a lower vacancy rate and others had a higher vacancy rate. You know, we've all heard and experienced the adage of doing more with less, and this is an issue that has had significant impact on the workload, employee morale, and the effective and efficient provision of services to the public. The turnover rate for fiscal year '22 ended up at 26.3%, which is significantly higher than in past years. I'm not sure how well you can see this chart that I've got up here, but the turnover rates, the right end of the column is fiscal year '22. The turnover rates in the previous two years was around 21.5%. And then you can see that the rate in fiscal year 2018 was significantly higher at 25.33%. However, as I've looked into this, my understanding is that this was an outlier due in part to some of the actions that were necessary in order to balance the budget that year following a substantial loss in revenue from the previous revaluation. To give some comparisons with other.
You got it. Yes.
Your turnover rate of 26, is that in just positions that are currently filled? Or are you putting the number of the unfilled positions in with that too? It could very easily have some, we could make some numbers up. I'm saying you're making numbers up, but I'm saying you've got unfilled positions, you've got filled positions, and you said one out of every four is not filled. But how long have they not been filled?
Yes, so the vacancy rate is a separate number entirely from the turnover rate. In terms of the turnover rate would be based on our budgeted positions and then the number of terminations over.
Of our positions?
Yes. So that's used in the calculation, but it doesn't factor in, you know, you may have had a position that turned over twice in the year.
You may have had a position that didn't ever get filled.
Correct, and that would not be, that would not count as part of the turnover rate.
But it's budgeted.
It is, it's just used as the denominator for the calculation, not, it doesn't affect the actual turnover.
Okay, I'm gonna stop because I'm confused, but it's okay. 26%, if you're saying 26% of the 75% that are filled, that's really a much bigger number than what you have budgeted. You're somewhere in the 40% range of either not filling or turning over in a year, if my math is right.
I think, I think, yes. So if you use the filled positions as the base for your calculation.
Yes.
Yes, and I do not believe that is what is being used here. I believe the number, the number for the calculation is total budgeted positions, and then that's the denominator, and then the numerator would be the number of terminations over the course of the year.
So if a position was not filled during the course of the year, it would not count in the turnover rate?
To my point there, forgive me, Madam Chair, but my point there is you're already operating at 25% less if one out of every four is not filled. And then you have a turnover rate of 25% of that? You're in a bigger mess than 75% than 26%.
Yes, I, yes, that is correct. That is correct. When you, when you look at our vacancies, the turnover rate on top of our vacancies, yes, it is a more substantial issue than presented here, correct?
And I don't know if you're gonna address this, but how many of those 25% are newly non-filled or they have been consistently non-filled during a couple of budget cycles?
I don't have that information in this presentation today, but that is information that we can provide.
Attorney Moore Field.
For clarification, doesn't turnover mean that someone that is working left?
Yes.
So vacant position at the start of the year or budgeted position that's not been filled in the fiscal year is not counted in these? It does not generate a turnover?
It's not counted as a turnover, but the point, I think, that Commissioner Keefe is making is that if you, if you reduce the number of positions to reflect the filled positions versus the vacant positions on top of that, then it is a more substantial issue. Is that it?
26% of 75% of your budgeted positions?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
That's it. Yeah, it means someone left, but it doesn't count the positions that are already vacant.
Right.
And that's not typically how we've calculated turnover rate, but yes, that is absolutely an issue.
Okay.
To provide a few, we did reach out to some other jurisdictions to look at their turnover rates compared to ours, and some of these are on a calendar year versus a fiscal year. But Wake County's turnover rate last calendar year was 16% compared to ours of, in the fiscal year, 26%. The city of Fayetteville's was 16% as well with a 7.3% vacancy rate. And Anzlo County provided information that was a bit closer to ours of 24.5% turnover last calendar year. So what was done in the current budget to try to address these issues? The fiscal year '23 recommended adopted budget, recommended and adopted budget, included a 4% cost of living adjustment for employees along with additional labor market adjustments for sworn law enforcement officers and detention officers in the sheriff's office. The budget also provided funding to complete a classification and compensation study, which is currently ongoing and which Dominique will provide an update on momentarily. But given the fact that the compensation study takes time to complete and the county has been experiencing significant vacancy and turnover issues, we believe something had to be done to provide some relief prior to the study's completion. The board approved, I believe in June, the use of just over $8 million in displaced American Rescue Plan funding to provide employees with a one-time retention incentive, split into three payments across the current fiscal year. Full-time employees in a pay status before or on July 5 of this year were eligible to receive a total of $4,000, with a $1,500 payment in July of this year, a $1,000 payment in December, and the final $1,500 payment in June of 2023. So long as they remain employed with the county at the time of the payment. Part-time employees were eligible for a prorated incentive based on their FTE. The second payment of up to $1,000 will be included in employees' December '22 paychecks. We also saw an issue of trying to keep newly hired employees from leaving, which was also an issue of employees leaving the organization somewhat shortly in the first year of their employment.
Can I go back?
Yes.
That $1,000 though was for people who started later.
Yes, that is correct, so.
Not that that's when the first paid.
It's not on top of both, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a difference. That $1,000 was people who started after that July 1.
So there is the $4,000 broken out into three payments and a $1,000 incentive in December for those employees, but there's an additional $1,000 incentive for employees hired after that first deadline but before November 1 in June of '23, so long as they remain employed with the county. That is correct. And then the goal of these incentives, once again, was to keep the vacancy rate from continuing to climb and provide employees with an incentive to bridge the compensation study. That said, we understand and have discussed the fact that money is not the only factor that contributes to employees deciding whether or not they want to remain with or leave an organization, and that there are other factors that make up the overall employee experience. Remote work became a necessity early in the COVID-19 pandemic and has continued to be popular as the pandemic evolved and gas prices went up over the past year. County management has tasked department heads with within their department to allow remote work and flexible schedules where possible, so long as they maintain appropriate service levels. The county also hosted an organization-wide career fair in July at the Crown Expo Center to raise awareness of vacant positions and career opportunities across our various departments. We saw around 250 people attend the event with 106, or 53% of those who submitted exit surveys when they left, applied for jobs during the event, and others then said they planned to apply after. We looked at our data in NeoGov and experienced a dramatic increase in the number of applications submitted through the platform on the day of the career fair as well as the days leading up to and following that event. And I have talked to several department heads who have said they did hire employees who came to that event and applied for jobs, so that is definitely something we want to continue to do moving forward. Human Resources has also developed a more robust offboarding process for county employees through NeoGov that includes a knowledge transfer, information about benefits, and a request to complete an exit survey that asks questions intended to provide detailed information regarding why employees are leaving, where they're going, and then feedback on how we can improve retention going forward. This is now being distributed to all employees who separate from the county voluntarily. We held four virtual employee town hall meetings in June and July, during which nearly 700 employees attended, and information was shared regarding the recently adopted budget, employee pay and benefits, and updates from HR and DEI. Finally, we solicited retention incentive ideas. We surveyed in September with questions regarding various incentive options that were provided to seek feedback from employees regarding which would be the most meaningful to them. We received more than 1,000 responses and are processing the information to help inform future decisions and recommendations to the board regarding additional strategies for employee recruitment and retention. So where are we now, five months into FY 2023? The chart on this page provides you with a snapshot of our vacancy rate at the end of fiscal year '22 on June 28, and then again at the end of November. The top column is the vacancy rate across all county departments, and then I have provided vacancy information from a number of our larger and/or more challenging-to-recruit departments below that. In the far right column, you can see the change in the vacancy rate with a positive number indicating a decrease and a negative number indicating an increase. In general, I think it's fair to say that our vacancy levels have mostly held or slightly improved across the majority of departments and the organization as a whole. Now, that was the goal of providing the retention incentives, but obviously there are other factors that go into that, so I can't say with certainty that that was what did it, but that was a goal of that initiative. One thing the retention incentives really were not capable of addressing is employee recruitment, which may be why we were only seeing vacancy rates remain stable rather than decrease. So as I said earlier, one of our most significant challenges in terms of recruitment is our practice of posting those positions at the minimum salary or in a very small range, which is complicated by the fact that our minimums are no longer competitive with the market. This is not something the retention incentives can fix, but it is something that the compensation study will assess and make recommendations to address.
How does detention have a 33%? Madam Chair, I could ask that question. It's 117, 117. I mean, I don't.
That would have been, if I may respond, that would be because of the total employees. There was a loss of one budgeted position in that area, which resulted in the, while it was the same number of employees, a shortage of vacancies. So there was an employee or a position that was reduced in the detention area of the budget. And I don't know the specifics behind that, but that meant that while the numbers remained the same, it became a greater percentage of the total workforce. Is that, so there was.
It makes sense, but you have to tell me that.
Yes.
That, that, that chart doesn't make sense if you don't tell me that.
Yes.
So it was ready to position this go. Okay.
Following up on the detention, 44% vacancy rate tells me there's somewhere around 240 detention officers or detention staff members. But somewhere around 240, and he's operating with 117 vacancies. Does that sound right?
That may not be all officers.
But he says detention.
Yeah, because you've got a lot of people.
He's budgeting.
Right.
Where, where's, where's that, can he use that funding for recruitment? If he's got 117.
His funding, you're saying, for the air positions?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of vacancies right there, and you said yourself that we have a 1 in 5, 1 in 4, 25% vacancy. Can we not use some of that for incentive money? Budgeted, these are budgeted positions, correct?
Correct. There are 265 total budgeted positions, and that would be obviously a question for budget, yes.
Well, it's not budget because it's the sheriff. I mean, we just approve the sheriff's budget. We don't, we don't go line by line of what the sheriff can do with his budget. My point to this is there's a lot of vacancies. These are budgeted positions. We approve budgets based on positions. There's a lot of, what's the right word, what's the right title he uses? Available money that's not being spent on budget that we can use for recruitment, you know, couldn't we?
Commissioner Adams.
I guess what, I think you're trying to get to is, take those vacant positions and tell me how much money we have. I mean, there's, there's money that hadn't been spent in those, you don't have to do it right now, but I'm thinking that's what he's saying. So you've got that money that hadn't been used for this whole budget session, and you can take that money, not all the positions, because you want to fill a bunch of them, but you ain't gonna fill them all at one time. So you could take a percentage of that money that hadn't been spent, because it's still in the line item, I think that's what you're saying, and use that for recruitment and retention as opposed to taking money out of the fund, I mean, out of the general fund?
We, you're right, you're right. We, we allowed $8 million to be taken out of our general fund for employee retention. Meanwhile, according to this chart, that money's there, and it's still getting budgeted in those departments, but we took general fund money for that $8 million, right?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
So I will say, you know, to that point, I think that the issue with, that we've talked about, about compression is still an issue as well, depending on how those incentives would be distributed or used for recruitment, but.
So you, all of the current detention officers are pretty much at the minimum pay level. So if you increase the pay level of those you bring in who are new, you will create more morale issues by doing that.
And we did that, we did that a year ago. We increased all the detention officers, and that caused a compression.
But we, did we increase.
Well, it increased the current and also the minimums for new recruits, so it didn't, it did not exacerbate compression.
So is there a suggestion to increase across the board, I guess?
Okay, I'm, I didn't want to even hear. I guess my thing is this, is that, let's not get this confused. The compression issue is the compression issue. We got to deal with that, and that's going to be dealt with. I think what Commissioner Keefe is saying in the interim, even if you go down to what we're gonna be doing later with the G, is why would we do general fund money to do that as opposed to taking this money that's sitting there and deal with that issue within his budget? I mean, he's gonna move just from one line item to another one. But if this money is here, this money is not, for me, is not to deal with the compression issue. We still have to move on that compensation and compression issue. But if we're talking about increasing the retention in the short term, can you not use some of these funds to be able to do that? That's, I think those are two separate issues that we're looking at and that he's talking about. That makes sense.
I mean, I'm not trying to speak.
And to be honest, nobody's at the level they were at two years ago. If we're, you know, people that work in fast food aren't at the level. Everybody's gone up. So I mean, we have to, that's a reality of the world we live in, you know? Everybody's asked the same, they're gonna lay down. Thank you.
Okay.
So that brings us.
One moment.
No, not that.
I'm looking at 4G. Says for Chris, by sheriff to use funds.
Yes, ma'am, that, Commissioner, that item is on the agenda to use proceeds they get from the telecommunications contract to give incentive bonuses to existing detention staff.
Okay, let's stay where we're at.
Well, and I'm not, but I think that's the exact issue he's talking about. Instead of using that, he's used this money that had, that we hadn't used to be budgeted as opposed to taking, but we'll get there though, from that line item.
Go ahead.
So that brings us to the current compensation study. And again, I appreciate your patience with what I have presented so far. The county issued a request for proposals, or an RFP, in August seeking a firm to conduct a classification and compensation study for the county to, quote, "assist the county in reviewing and analyzing the current staff compensation structure and obtain recommendations for development of a structure that ensures internal equity and external competitiveness." So the scope of the study that has been requested includes conducting a labor market survey and recommending appropriate grades for positions based on market competitiveness, recommending where employees should be located on their grades based on their relevant experience. And the intent here, again, is to be able to retain experienced employees and also to effectively attract and recruit experienced employees, which will determine how vacant positions are budgeted going forward, evaluating existing compression issues and making recommendations to address them, comparing the county's benefits and incentives with the market, assisting the county with developing a new compensation philosophy and strategy intended to enhance our competitiveness going forward. And this would include that mechanism for how employees would move through their grades over time, and then ensuring the county's compensation practices are in line with the county's values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we have selected McGrath Human Resources Group to complete the study. And again, our goal is to have recommendations that can be implemented as part of the FY '24 budget process. Starting, that budget starts July 1 of '23, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, and that's important for probably everybody even that's watching. Yes, correct. Thank you. So now I've asked Human Resources Director Dominique Hall, who has been engaged in this process since she came to the county in late October, to provide a brief update on where we are in the study, and we're both available to answer any questions or comments that she may have.
Greetings, Chairman and Commission. As Brian stated, we are working with McGrath Human Resources Group, and I think it is important to note that the founder and owner of McGrath is currently our project manager and is leading the study for us. We have held a kickoff meeting, and McGrath is currently interviewing departments to gain more insight of their current positions and any struggles with recruitment and retention that they are having. And we're almost 85% complete with that process in hopes of having it complete before the holiday vacation. Next, a few employees in each position classification will be completing an electronic position analysis or job questionnaire that will afford them information provided in their current job descriptions in which their supervisors will review. McGrath is also surveying other comparable entities via a market survey. We hope to receive McGrath's recommendations by late March, early April, and will be meeting periodically throughout this process to ensure that we're meeting all targets to provide information to you timely. So that's where we are currently.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Commissioner Adams?
Just to update that, because I don't know if you were on the line with us, but when the chair and I were on the line with McGrath, and they will survey the rest of the commissioners too in that study, so expect a, to Dominique, a call or for you all to be scheduled to have a conversation with McGrath.
Commissioner Keith.
Okay, thank you. Couple things I had not been talking to, obviously, by McGrath, so I didn't know. But what I hear is the same thinking that we've had for years and years and years about employee retention, and most of it revolves around compensation. And compensation is important, but there is a reason that we have to look in the mirror that all of these other counties that Brian talked about that have lower percentages than us, is it because that they, their work, they feel like it's important, they enjoy where they work, it's a good cultural atmosphere, that they're appreciated, that they feel like their work is important, and all of those things? Because although compensation is important, then are we looking at those kind of things because people will stay in a job that they feel like is meaningful? Well, we're not talking about that. Everything revolves around compensation. To Brian's point earlier, and we talked about this, we authorized eight million dollars in employee benefits. If you go on the employee website, we've got the same number of jobs that we're trying to get now that we did before this happened. So I don't think that the use of the eight million dollars, it looks like it only helped us out with eleven jobs so far. Now, you can always tell me that it might have been greater if we didn't, but we don't know that. Alls I'm asking is that we think differently in this new world, hoping that people come is not a plan, and that we've got to establish a culture. When Brian says to me that people are stuck and they can't get out, I know that we have programs to where they can, they can go to classes, and they can go to leadership things, and they can, they can get better within the county. And we have to start investing in our people instead of just paying our people, because they can get paid anywhere, and we can't compete with the federal government, and we can't compete with, I've been here for most of those compensation studies, Janette, I've been through it, right? Marshall, you've been through some of them too. And it's always the same thing. We're losing people to the city. We're losing people to the federal government. We're losing people. We don't raise their salaries, but it's not working, because we're still losing people, and we're raising salaries. Also, we've got to look at why people want to work, and the culture of this business is much more than a compensation. That's all I'm asking.
Commissioner Jones?
I agree with Mr. Commissioner Keith. I would like to know if any of these states have involved, as he was stating, do any of these studies show like how many retreats there has been, if there's been any team building? Do they do any retreats for the county? I know that you're new here, but can anyone answer that question for me in the past? Does Cumberland County offer retreats for their, for their employees? Do they have team building? I'd just like to know, do you all have any of that type of data, information? Because I agree with him, we need more incentives for the people to want to work here.
So if I may, the compensation study would not typically look at those sorts of items, but I do know there are departments, and it's probably on a more department-type level of what, I know the library earlier this year had a planning retreat with their staff. So I know that that is happening in different departments, but I do think, you know, to the point, we are aware and cognizant of issues well beyond compensation that we want to improve and address in this organization. And that is, you know, me being here, Dominique being here, these are priorities for us. You know, and I don't want, we want to make you aware of this compensation study because it was approved in the budget and it was a priority for the Board of Commissioners, but that is not to say that is all that we are doing and we're looking at in terms of the employee experience and trying to make this an attractive workplace, because I think that that is essential. And to your point, that is one hundred percent the goal to do everything.
I will say that changing the organizational culture takes time, and we've got, as you can see, pretty much a crisis with pay. So we need to be working along both tracks.
To Commissioner Jones' point, I'm sure that detention doesn't have retreats, okay? But that's a tough job. Animal control is a very, very tough, stressful job, you know, much more than some of the other ones. And I'll go back, people need to feel like what they're doing is important, and it will retain new people.
We have to get more creative in the way that we think, in the way that people want to work today in this culture. We have to think with a creative mindset so that they not only feel valued when they come to work, but they also have a purpose, even a personal purpose, in coming to work. You know, I don't know how many people say, I'm going to come here, besides us, I'm going to come here and stay here for the rest of my life, you know? So people need to feel a personal purpose, and I know that's not why they work, but after COVID, that's what people are thinking now. Sally, did you have something to say?
Well, no, the public library does have Staff Development Day that they do, and so they are one of the departments that does do something like that, and they do team building as a part of that.
What's her retention rate? I'm curious, because I thought that they would probably have, okay, the lowest vacancy rate.
Not very least. It's not the lowest, because we've got some small departments that have zero. There are some departments.
Don't take away my point.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Dominique, for your presentation. Madam Manager, we will move on to item three B. If you introduce the item and the speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Social services and public health employees are covered by the State Personnel Act, and changes to their job classifications must be approved by the state. We've encountered significant delays in these changes being approved, which is affecting our operations. One option for addressing this issue is for the county to become what is known as substantially equivalent. Human Resources Director Dominique Hall will present this issue, what it means, and what the process is for approval.
Welcome back, Ms. Hall.
Thank you so much. Greetings again. Having a equivalent personnel system enables a county to maintain a personnel system for the employees in its jurisdiction. For Cumberland County, this refers to the Department of Social Services as well as the Department of Public Health. Without having to seek review and approval from the state of North Carolina's Office of State Personnel, as long as the county's system remains substantially equivalent to the basic requirements by the state. Our current process is for HR-related changes like new positions, reclassifications of positions for social services and the public health, after being approved here, have to go before the state HR office for approval. The state office also has to approve other county changes in the state, and this has historically been a responsibility of one staff member. This has created a backlog, and we have experienced wait times of several months to receive a response. In that waiting period, we have high risk, we have a high risk of losing our opportunities over classification approvals. Additionally, we have required grants and developed new programs that require unique positions to be created, as the state nor the county had a current classification that fit. During the approval process, we have lost several months of grant funding, and after that approval, we still needed time to recruit. Therefore, we have had to ask for extensions for grants during that time. There are six system portions or areas that can, that we can petition for substantially equivalency, excuse me. Those are recruitment, selection, and advancement, classification and compensation, training, employee relations, equal opportunity and affirmative action, and political activity. There are two areas that affect us the most and would be beneficial to seek. Recruitment and selection and classification and compensation. This will afford us the opportunity to create positions and reclassify positions without the extra layer of approval from the state. And this is the process to become substantially equivalent, and we're currently have meetings scheduled with departments and the state representative to acquire information and next steps. The state has indicated that the timeframe for this process is about ninety days. After approval, we'll have a couple of more things that we'll have to maintain. That's recertification, so ongoing recertification of the commitment by the Board of Commissioners at the state's discretion, but normally after significant change of the membership of the Board of Commissioners. So we'll have to recertify after those things or after passage of significant new legislation or policy that apply to the substantial equivalent areas. We also must maintain staffing, provide ongoing qualified staff in exempted areas of the local personnel system. Demands are met in an efficient and expedient manner, and annually report an organizational chart that reflects the staff assigned to the operations of the personnel function. We also have to maintain a file system documentation, maintaining and annually submit personnel policies pertaining to the exempted areas, and respond to requests for additional information. And also maintains our records and reports. We should create, maintain personnel reserve to serve the operational requirements of exempted portions of the personnel system and maintain history of position and employee actions process. So again, this is just a basic overview of becoming substantially equivalent.
Commissioner Adams?
Do we have to vote to do that, though, or y'all just do it?
You do have to.
I mean, it wasn't an action, it makes sense. I mean, it just makes sense. I don't know how many positions that entails, but if it's at DSS and public health, it's probably quite a few, and that's why we have all those vacancies. So I don't know if we need a motion to, for staff to proceed with that, or whether there's an action item, I didn't see it.
Madam Chair, if I may, I believe that we just need consensus to move forward with the process. There's still quite a bit of work we have to do to be able to submit to the state, and we will come back to the Board to request approval before that occurs. Do we have a consensus?
I have two quick questions.
Mr. Keith?
One is, we feel like this will rapidly hire people more if we get qualified on that, is that true?
It's to basically reduce the timeframe for acquiring new positions.
Okay, and that now is up to?
Ninety days, three, four months.
And how much will this help us out? I mean, can we make hires quickly?
Yes.
Okay. I'm interested in political activity.
Okay, give me one second, I think I have that. So it reads, employees will be protected against coercion for political purposes and will be prohibited from using their official.
I just want to make sure, what is the opposite? Okay? That's good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
We would now move on to, was there a consensus? Did we have a consensus for them to continue? Okay, you have a consensus, Ms. Hall. Thank you. Madam Manager, we will now move on to the environmental justice report for Ann Street landfill. If you could present, the presenter, please, introduce the presenter.
So as we have discussed on several occasions, the county is considering options for future solid waste disposal. Ann Street landfill has less than eight years of capacity left. Those options include modifications to Ann Street facilities, which trigger a need, or an additional facilities, which trigger the need for an environmental justice report, which is attached to your agenda in draft form. We want to make sure the Board is aware of this report before it's submitted to the state and before we begin outreach activities to affected communities. General Manager for Environmental Resources, Amanda Botter, will present this item.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Amanda. So are there any questions before we start?
Commissioner Adams?
Because when we did this study, or commissioned this study, it was because we were trying to get mile and yards, but if we move to the new procedure we're going to do, does this study still, because it's a different kind of impact on these folk as opposed to what we were seeking to do?
It will still trigger the report because North Carolina DEQ requires a report if there is more than ten percent capacity increase on the landfill site, which bailing, mining the bailing facility, lining it and building it back up will increase the capacity at the site, and then the transfer station in itself will be a trigger. But there is less, that's correct, there's less of an impact, we're looking at a smaller area of impact. So this is review for some of you, but I'll try to go through it quickly, because we do have two new commissioners. I wanted to talk a little bit about where we are with the landfill. We mentioned there's less than eight years of life remaining at the landfill. I want to mention that is for municipal solid waste, that is what we typically consider garbage. That is also for construction and demolition debris, which is the debris that results from new construction or renovation of buildings. So we're looking at a couple of options. We're looking at a transfer station. The purpose of the transfer station would be to divert half of our garbage to another facility to allow us time to mine out our unlined bale field, and so that we can prepare that bale field to be lined and used as a line cell for future garbage. And our goal would be to divert fifty percent of our waste stream by January 1, 2024. We're looking at RFPs for a transfer station, and then we're looking at RFPs for transport and disposal. We are looking at an increased cost for user fees and tipping fees, and we would recommend that increase in the FY24-24 budget process. The bale field expansion, the bale field is called a bale field because when the waste interred to the landfill, it was baled by a bailing facility. That's how you got your compaction. You didn't use the big rolling compactors we use now. So it's got a bale field because it was stacked in bales, much like a bale. And we would look at excavating this portion, which has been in place for many years. There's a lot of decomposition there. We would separate the soils from what waste is remaining. We would reenter the waste into our line cell and use the soil for cover soils for the landfill operation. And we would need to divert while we're doing this so that we don't use up our available So this brings us to environmental justice. EPA definition, environmental justice is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. So we talked about this, what we're proposing to do here would trigger the requirements for this report and this process. And so we have worked on this report that looks at several items, including median household income, includes disability, sex by age, employment rate, health, several different issues, and then that is compared to the county average. If there's more than a ten percent difference, then that's a threshold. If it's more than fifty percent minority, then there's a threshold. And then if there's more than five percent in comparison to the county average for poverty. So we looked at a one-mile radius around the landfill. We looked at the census tracts that adjoin the landfill. We triggered several of these thresholds. A significant threshold was that within a one-mile radius, seventy-six percent of the community is African-American. So our next step, we're going to ask for a justice report to go to the North Carolina DEQ at the end of this month so that they can review the report and concur. DEQ at the end of this month, so that they can review the report and concur with our plan to move forward with a public participation process, to engage the people in the community so that they can have the ability to know about what we're proposing, understand mitigation strategies, and provide feedback in the mitigation. So we would propose to bring to you next month the participation outreach plan. The participation outreach plan would involve our communication tools, it would involve stakeholder communication, and our meetings and events. And then, we would like to, in this process, receive and respond to NCDQ comments about the environmental justice report before we proceed with the implementation of this plan, and that would need to be done prior to a permit submitted for the transfer station or the bail fill. And with that, Marina Klee for this report, and she will also has prepared the public participation plan we will work, we will present to you next month. If you have any questions, she or myself are available for questions. So do you want to have any questions?
Commissioner Furman?
I have a question, and this doesn't have anything to do with the justice report or anything of that nature, but I just want to point out something. I don't know if any, if you were on this board, or in this room, or in the employment of this organization in 2012, would you please raise your hand? Okay, four of us, everybody. In 2012, the county manager, James Martin, at that time, we had a discussion about the landfill, and I'm pointing this out for information of everybody. And I asked him what the was at that time, and I don't know what study it was based on, or how old the study was, but at that time, he told me eighteen years. And I said, and eighteen years sounded like a long time in 2012, you know, it would work out to 2030. Now we're being told it's eight years, and once again, that works out to exactly 2030. And we ended our discussion talking about the recycling that February was beginning to do, and what impact we thought that might have on the useful life of the landfill. And we thought it would greatly increase it substantially, like the numbers you were showing us a while ago, the twenty to twenty-five years, which is what this might do if we're successful with it. And it just made me wonder, the eight years that we're being told about now, what, how far back does the study go that gave us that number? Is it just the same study that we got the eighteen from before, and all we've done is just subtract a year every year? Is that what we've done, or has there been another study since then?
So each year, DEQ requires us to do a survey of the volume, or to do the surface of the landfill, and then we compare that surface from the prior year, and we get a volume, and then, so we know how many tons we placed in the landfill. And then we take the tonnage from that past year, and we calculate the density to see how well we have compacted and maximized airspace. So we do that annually, and I would say that this is based on last year's plot over. We may have missed a couple of years when we did a partial closure where the grades may have been off a little bit, but for the most part, it's calculated annually.
Okay, well, that's what I thought, and I think it just seemed to be, to me, to be such a coincidence, and I wonder, do we have any feeling for what the recycling program has done? So if it's still on the same timetable that it was ten years ago, then there must have been a lot more growth in the county, I suppose, and I know there has been, and I don't know if we can assess the recycling impact, or have we tried to do that?
I would say that our recycling rates are very low. They are very low, and I would say that our growth in the land, with tonnage, it tends to be pretty flat. Some years we'll have more, some years we'll have less. Some of that dynamic is controlled by the transfer station in town. There is a transfer station that's owned by the city available that's leased to GFL, yes.
What are you referring to when you say recycling rate?
I would say...
What's being recycled at our landfill?
I would say that what, now what I see recycled at our landfill through our convenience sites, through county residents, only represents about ten percent. EPA looks for thirty percent, but I don't have the numbers from the city to add to our numbers.
Yeah, what I'm thinking about is what's not going in there, what would have been going in there without the recycling, that's really what I'm thinking about. But that's just, that's just a point for thought, okay? And I know you don't have the answers to that, but what's not going in there has tremendous impact on the landfill's life, and that's what the county manager and I were talking about ten years ago. Anyway, that's just a point for thought.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Botter.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move on to the review of the subdivision lot standards. County manager, Madam County Manager?
The Board of Commissioners asks the Planning Department to review regulations allowing zero lot lines for single-family developments. The Planning Department subsequently brought back some recommendations. At the October thirteenth agenda session, the Board of Commissioners gave direction to staff to obtain feedback from the Planning Board on options for possible amendment to the subdivision ordinance to address this issue. The Board also asks that staff obtain feedback from the development community. Planning Director, Planning and Inspections Director, Ross Howard, will present several options and share the requested feedback. Staff is requesting further direction on this issue.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. So as the county manager had mentioned, I have a presentation to bring back some of the feedback on the discussions we've been having regarding zero lot line. About a ten-slide session here, so the goal of my presentation is maybe have one or two slides that just present sort of how we got to where we are, the policies, and the options that staff have come up with while we were working in conjunction with the county attorney's office, taking it forward to the Planning Board, and also the HBA to get feedback, and then bringing that back, and then to, as the manager had alluded to, to get further direction about how you as a board would like to move forward with the standards. So, just to move forward a little bit, so some of the background on this, in June of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners had requested staff to review these development standards and to come back with options for an amendment. So Planning Staff and Legal had pretty much worked together to try to figure out how we wanted to do that. What we found is that we had standards that were already a part of the county, even though they were historic, going back to 1982. We had some standards that we use as a point of departure to devise the options that I'm going to be showing to you here shortly. We had brought the information back. The Board of County Commissioners subsequently asked staff to come back, or to take it to the Planning Board for some feedback and comment, and also go out to the development community for the proposals. We did reach out to the Home Builders Association to get some written comments and feedback. We presented the options, that feedback, and then we took all that information to the Planning Board at the November meeting, got their general consensus as to what their feelings are about the subject, and so I am here today to present the summary of what those options are, or the direction that at least the board wanted to go into. So I have one slide that I just want to talk about zero lot line just briefly, just to give some educational planning information to the board members. Zero lot line is an industry-wide standard, it's a development type that you can find all over the country. So, but primarily, when you talk zero lot line in planning terms, it's really more geared towards an attached product. So you'll see it in patio homes, you'll see it in town homes, you'll see it in shopping centers where you have firewalls, where you have separate shops that go together, and they want to sell off the units individually. So as such, for that type of development type, there is a requirement that, or a stipulation that to get that kind of development, you have to reduce the setbacks, and you have to reduce the typical lot standards in order to be able to produce that type of product. Now, the current method that Cumberland County has been using since roughly 2008 to 2010 is that about that time, we had lumped single-family homes in with all of that type of product. So for all intents and purposes, again, we treat single-family homes in our subdivision ordinance pretty much the same that we would treat a town home, or a patio home, or any other type of... So when we looked at the eighty-two ordinance, we had discovered this type of item here, the variable lot residential development. We did have this before, where county did provide flexibility to developers in order to be able to make some modest changes and flexibility in the development standards in order to be able to account for various other site conditions, and I'll go over that here in a minute. So again, that's been present since the eighty-two ordinance, we actually found a copy of that ordinance, and it's in there, but it was modified in the early 2000s. So what happened back in eighty-two and then the nineties is that that standard would allow for some flexible lot designs, similar to what we do today, but there were parameters in place, there were certain types of regulations and stipulations you had to meet to even engage into that type of development type, and those were all spelled out in the ordinance, but they were removed somewhere in the 2008 and 2010 period, and then the variable lot and the zero lot line were combined into the thing that we have today. So, and then all of those standards were pretty much removed out of the ordinance. So, the proposal is that we're looking at the definitions, and to put the original definitions for that type of development, the variable lot development back in, and to modify the zero lot line development definition to remove single-family uses out of the ordinance. Also to insert some of the standards that were in the ordinance throughout the eighties and nineties, when staff looked at it, we thought they were fairly solid, you know, types of regulations with updated language. So, what I have for you in the next few slides is we have three options that staff had presented working with the county attorney, and I'm going to try to, to the best degree I can, to walk you through what those options are, and if there are any questions, of course, you can be able to ask questions. So first and foremost, this is the zero lot line definition that's currently in our ordinance. Back in the day, the single-family and a number of these were not in there, so in order to be able to take single-family out of zero lot line, first and foremost, no matter consideration, you would have to take single-family just out of that definition. And so what we did is we took the 1982 ordinance for variable lot developments, and then we take the single-family stuff from here, and then we move it into its own separate definition down here, which reflects what we had throughout the eighties and nineties, and here's the definition of that. So it's a development that consists of single-family structures on individual lots where the developer may reduce the minimum lot size of such lots in accordance with the subdivision ordinance, and there are standards in there that we've proposed for them. So, the three options that staff had been working on, so this is option one, and this is again, following the 1982 ordinance primarily, I would say eighty to ninety percent of this is coming out of the older ordinance. In order to do that type of development back in the day, you had to have public water and sewer, there was no way around that. It was required. The way they did lot yield calculations was a lot different than the way we do it today. So for zero lot lines, what we do today is if you have the gross size of your lot, you calculate the minimum square footage of the lots with the whole of the entirety, and you divide it into that, and that gives you your total lot yield. Now, that's irrespective if, say, fifty percent of that lot is developable, right? So, but that's the way we do it today. The option that staff is putting forward per the eighty-two and ninety ordinances is to, the way they calculate lots, is you take the gross lot size, you would subtract all of the wetlands, flood areas, water, all the stuff that's water that you can't really build upon, minus twenty percent for all, twenty percent for all of the roads and infrastructure that would have to be part of that development, divided by, then you take that, and then divide that by the minimum lot size for the district, and that tells you how many lots you can get on that piece of property. Everybody understand that so far? Okay. So that's what staff is, again, proposing for option one.
Is there setbacks involved in that?
I'll get into that here in this next slide.
Okay, but that's option two then?
No, that's option one. So we're, yeah, there are two slides for option one. So, back in the older ordinances, you could reduce the lot size, but only by twenty-five percent, so it establishes a floor that you cannot go below, right? They had no stipulations for waiving setbacks at all, so that just wasn't there, and staff's option is to keep the setbacks for that district. If they wanted to change those setbacks, they could always go through an appeal process or go through some sort of board approval in order to look at their situation and get a variance or some other type of process. But the way the proposal is written per the eighty-two ordinance, and what staff had put forward is to, there is no waiver of setbacks, you got to meet the setbacks. Also, how we calculated open space back in that day, staff had put into this proposal. So, the way that the variable lot developments calculated open space was, they would take what you would otherwise be allowed, and if you reduced it, they would take the difference or the delta of what you were supposed to have, you had to put into an open space requirement for your development, all right? So staff again put that in for option one, so we put that back in here, right?
Ross, can you say that again?
So, for example, if you're going to use this type of thing where you're reducing the lot sizes by twenty-five percent, if you look at it across the aggregate for the whole lot, if you had a certain number of lots that if you didn't do this, this is what you'd be allowed, and then all of a sudden, you do a reduction of the lot size, the delta of that reduction for what you were supposed to do to what you're going to had to be set aside in open space.
The variable also is buildable space. And we all know that some green space can also be non-buildable space, right?
Yes.
You could have a park, or green space, or walking trails...
Sure.
That, but they may not be buildable.
Correct.
So, you see where I'm going, right?
Yes, I see where you're going.
You can use the non-buildable spaces green space, possibly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Actually, we do that now for our subdivision ordinance, but that's something we're looking at as a part of the update, is how we handle green space and open space calculations, but yes, you're correct, Commissioner. So the other options, and I'll try to make this as simple as, number two is the exact same option of everything you just heard. The only other option part of this is that instead of requiring the water and sewer, staff was saying, if you can get a well and septic permit, we're fine with that. So we're taking away the public water and sewer requirement from that, and then we presented that, but basically everything else stays the same. Again, so I'm going to walk through what the presentations and then what the results of that are, so just bear with me, just please. So, and then option three, which is an option, is you just do away with it altogether, all right? So if you wanted to do that option, the way I see it, all you need to do is just change the definition, that's it, and it takes single-family out of that, and then it's no longer a thing in the county anymore, okay? So, I wanted to stop here, just pause just for a second, so staff was very cognizant when we heard the feedback going back and forth with you as a board, so we want to make sure that we did listen to and try to take into account a number of the conversations that we had, excuse me. So the three options, if you choose option one or two, one, there was conversation about changing the name, nobody wanted the name, so if you pick an option, this will change the name of that, so single-family and zero lot line will no longer be associated with each other, right? Two, it keeps the setbacks, I know we've had a lot of conversations in zoning hearings about setbacks and so forth, so it keeps the setbacks the way that they're supposed to be for that district, and if they want wavering of that, they have to go to a board or some other type of approval body to seek relief from that. And then thirdly, as I said before, if we go to this twenty-five percent, it establishes a floor that you cannot decrease that down below. So what does that mean? Is that if somebody wanted to go below that, they'd have to go through a process like a rezoning or some other process whereby the board gets to see that, and you as a commissioner, because I think it was mentioned before, how they get approved. It would take it out of staff hands, and it would have to go to the board for you guys to approve whether or not you want to be able to accept that or not, but it'd be part of a rezoning discussion, and so...
Commissioner Keith?
Yeah. First of all, Ross, I think you're getting to just where we're going to be on this. I mean, these are all ticking the boxes that we have concerns about, and I think all the different agencies have concerns about. I do like variable lot line or whatever a lot more than zero lot line. My question is on the setbacks and the process. So if I understand this right, let's just say, for instance, an individual had a lot that was considered R forty, and twenty-five percent of it was not buildable. According to the current... According to the correct way that things go, they could still build, but let's just say it was a hundred acres just to make it easy, they can still build a hundred R40 homes even though 25% of it was not buildable.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Now, we're taking out the non-buildable parts. We're reducing that by 20% for roads and all the other stuff, which makes a lot of sense. And we're giving the developer the option to actually reduce the lot size by up to 25%. So instead of a one house for 40,000 square feet or one house per acre, they could actually go to, uh, R30.
It'd be 30,000.
Are R30 setbacks the same as R40?
Um, I don't have those in front of me, but generally they're roughly the same.
I thought they were close.
Right.
So, and they could do that with planning board, um, with, with planning staff acknowledging and approving that. It would not have to come to the board.
That's correct.
Only when they tried to deviate from that fluctuation would it have to come to the board.
That's right.
Okay. What is the thought, firstly, right now, I don't really have much of a problem with septic tanks because our planning, our health department has to approve whether a septic tank will work there and the water, but what's, uh, sell me on why I should not like septic tanks and, and water, well water.
You should not like septic tanks?
Tell me why I should not want to approve number two.
I think from staff's perspective, it was just a concession talking with the Home Builders' Association that, you know, we're, we deal more with rural properties which deal with septic and we don't have a lot of water lines and stuff countywide. So it was sort of throwing that out there as a concession, I think, to say if you can get a septic in well and it's approved, that we would be fine with that because we're just a rural area. We're not, like Fayetteville, for example, I think has the zero lot line stuff, but they also have PWC and they have water and sewer and they can go real small.
And what did your planning board think of this?
I got that on the next slide. So I just paused it. I got, I got two more slides after this. So I'm just gonna try to walk to the end if you, if you, you know, with your permission. So when we reached out to the HBA, this is just a general summary of what the HBA had requested. We asked for comments in writing because I wanted to actually have it on the record. So some of the suggestions was to rename it to single-family variable lot, which I think is inconsequential, just, you know, like tomato, tomato type thing. But to require the minimum lot size to be reduced by 50% and to reduce the setbacks up to 25%, um, I'll tell you, staff was not in favor of that. Do not change the lot yield calculation from what you have right now. Again, staff was not in favor of that. To allow septic in wells and to allow fee and loo for open space, we were okay with that because we do have standards in other parts of the subdivision ordinance where we have fee and loo requirements for open space provisions. I think that is a concession and is a compromise to the folks. We said that, that's fine by us. We don't really have a bone to pick with that. Now, final slide. So when we took all this to, uh, the planning board, we had a generalized discussion with the planning board and, uh, it, it was a long, a long discussion, I'll tell you, but there was no formal vote because I just asked for feedback. They all agreed that the standards need to be changed. That was the overwhelming sentiment from the board during that discussion. There was a consensus for the amended option two, what I just brought up with before, to take that, to allow septic if it's feasible or if it's realistic that you can put that in there and to also allow the fee and loo for open space. So that's where we are after bringing that back from the planning board. So at this particular point, staff is just looking for how and in what manner do you want staff to bring that back to you and will be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Questions, comments?
I'll just make my comment. I like option two and I don't have a problem with the septic tanks, but I am not in favor of the fee and loo, uh, of, of open space. Who decides that? They decide that they can say I'd rather pay than have the open space?
Yes, sir. No, sir. So that's a good question.
That's, I mean, how does that work?
Okay, so the current subdivision ordinance says that for every unit, so, so this would apply to group developments, apartments, single-family homes, it doesn't matter. It's a, it's a dwelling unit. For every dwelling unit, you have an 800 square feet that you have to provide up to 25,000 square feet. Now, if you do the math, that's like four subdivision lots, four units, because that's 24,000. When you trigger that fifth one, or if you go above 25,000 square feet, you can't pay a fee and loo at all. Like you have to provide the open space, period. There's no waiver from that. But if you're below that, like for small projects, we allow you to pay the fee and loo because if you have the mom and pops who do one or two lots, things like that, we just say that you can pay into that as compared to having to provide open space for a one to two subdivision lot. So there's a concession for the smaller projects.
So a big development would not have the option?
Correct. They have to provide it. And so all we're saying by this is that we would put these standards in line with all the other subdivision standards that we do, that they have that trigger that's there.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I have a question in reference to the septic in wells, if you're permitted. Would we not run into the problem, I don't know, would this be a setback? I know that some of the issues that they're having in some of the, uh, current neighborhoods, the fact that when people build a home septic, uh, you know, for instance, in my home, it's an older home, but what happens is if you don't hook up to PWC, which costs thousands of dollars, you have to continuously call every six months to get your septic tank pumped out. So would that not be a setback? I'm just asking.
Um.
When you're off building a certain area, basically, um, if the residents, because I know just like us, we didn't know that that was gonna happen, but once we bought the home, of course, because it is on septic, we have to, you know, well, we hooked up to the line because it's one of those issues where either you do or you continuously have to pay money to get your septic tank every six months, um, pumped. So I wanna know, would that be a setback or would that not be an issue when you're off building a certain area?
It wouldn't be an issue for us, you know, that, that would be more the, like, requirements for the environmental health department and their standardized testing procedures.
Might that be an issue for the homeowner? That if you built on land, like you get the permit, so you go on land because usually they don't tell the homeowners that that's the situation, so this costs out of their pocket. So I'm talking about for the residents.
I don't think that would be a setback or an issue at all, no ma'am.
Commissioner Adams?
Uh, Commissioner Jones, what, what tends to happen is that ends up being the issue when there's, uh, availability to be on PWC. Most of these things that we're doing out in the rural area, there is no PWC. And so they don't have an option, and I understand what you're saying, but they don't have an option to tie into, uh, when you're out in Graves Creek Stadium and all of those, all of those are, you're gonna have to do a septic tank. And, uh, what happens is the, uh, health department goes out there, see if it perks. Everything doesn't perk. So, uh, I think in your instance is that, you know, whether you take, pay the extra money to tap on the PWC or you keep your septic tank, these folks don't have that option because there is no PWC.
So were they building that would be an issue?
Right. That's not, yeah, that's not, yeah.
Commissioner Faircliff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ross, very quickly, refresh my memory, where does the fee and loo go? Who gets that money?
That, I'm looking at, yeah.
Is that the recreation fund?
That goes into a fund that I think is jointly used between the city and the county for the construction of future parks, right?
They go, they put it in the parks and roads.
Washington, Michigan.
On the county's.
County's.
Commissioner Key.
Ross, um, the rediscern, if water and sewer is available, that it's a requirement or are they gonna let them have the option?
No, we don't have the option. So the, so the subdivision ordinance has requirements that if you're within a certain distance, you have to extend it and connect.
Just wanna make sure that I can give it to you.
You did a good job.
What is the board's pleasure?
We'll find out, we'll find out if we get calls or whatever we do.
I'm with option two.
With the, with the septic tanks.
With the amendments that was mentioned, right?
Commissioner Jones?
Option two.
Commissioner Faircliff?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Council?
Sir.
I mean, if the boards, are you ready to have a, a formal text amendment presented to the board for option two?
I would ask, yeah, I'd ask that to go back to the planning board and then come back for a public hearing, uh, or the, yeah, to have a public hearing on, so that's.
If it goes back to the planning board, then they'll have to do their formal process. It'll be a while before you get it back.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you very much.
Madam Manager, we'll move on to item four, consideration of agenda items. The cause of the issues, um, Ms. Evans shared with you on November 10th regarding the delay in our financial audit, which is detailed in the letter from Cherry Becker attached to your agenda. The local government commission requires that we enter into a contract amendment with our auditor. General Manager for Financial Services, Vicky Evans, will present this item.
So, Madam Chair. Second.
Commissioner Jones.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I forgot.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair and, and Commissioners. So normally during this December agenda session meeting, I would be presenting, me and the auditor, would be presenting the results of the previous fiscal year-end audit report. And, um, because of some issues of our auditors with staffing turnover and they also had a software issue, um, they fell way behind in getting our audit completed and report written. As of today, um, we are, we are on a timeline to have it completed on December 16th, but we allowed a couple days flexibility by putting in the amended contract that we would have it done by December 19th. So as long as all of that timeline is met, we'll be making the presentation at the agenda session meeting in January and then at the evening meeting of, um, January as well.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Any questions, comments?
I would tell it so that the board doesn't get, um, that we did some, this, we had this same discussion with another board that we had last week and I think, uh, a lot of the accounting firms had some of the same issues. Um, and we had a robust on another committee that Vicki and I sat on, so this is kind of.
And Cherry Becker is not their auditor.
And it's not their auditor, it was a different auditor, so.
Okay, thank you all for your understanding.
If I can get a motion.
Madam Chair, for the board's information, uh, when they, uh, spoke with, uh, Commissioner Jones and myself at the orientation session, they brought this up and was.
Okay, good, good.
Move to approve now.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 4B, Madam Manager. Uh, late in 2021, we learned that the state budget included $2 million in funding, um, for stream, for a stream restoration project at Methodist University. The funding was subsequently awarded and you accept, the Board of Commissioners accepted the funding from the state in March of 2022. Attached to your agenda is a recipient agreement between the state and Cumberland County for the project and an agreement between Methodist University and Cumberland County. The recipient agreement between the state and the county should be considered first before the agreement with Methodist University. The county will serve as the fiscal agent for this funding, but will have no role in managing the project. And, um, Methodist University sends their apologies, they were not able to be here. So I'm presenting this item, but Ms. Evans is available if you have any questions.
Motion to approve the recipient agreement with the state.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the second, uh, agreement to Methodist University.
It's been a motion to approve the.
No, it's too old. Let it do more with the state first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm only looking at the basic agenda, yes. Go ahead. Second, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Manager, we'll go on to item 4C. I believe the county attorney will present this item.
Yes, thank you. And this is the, the first time I have his, uh, and this has been to the board a couple of times before, this is a request from, from Mr. Van Gheens for what he refers to as a two and a half, I mean, a one and a quarter million dollar match to two and a half million dollars appropriated by the, in the state budget to the, uh, Community Development Foundation. And after digging into the details of this and I, and I've copied the act, the, the only legal document in place right now is this excerpt from the state budget that I've copied. It's, it's, it really, there has not been an appropriation yet. It has just been that the, uh, state funds will be provided on a periodic basis, which means not all, all upfront. It's contingent upon the foundation raising an equal amount of non-state funds, any funds not matched as of December 31st, 2022, shall revert to the general fund. So that's, that's the, the impetus that Mr. Van Gheens has been, had for pushing this to get done now. The, the language in the, uh, state allocation provision, probation provision, is this a match to the, uh, this equity, uh, equity fund that Mr. Van Gheens has presented and talked about a couple of times? And the language from that is, I've also attached that, it just says that, uh, funds received from Cumberland County, and this is from the description of this fund, the CDF's fund, the CDF anticipates receiving 1.25 million from Cumberland County, which 100% will qualify for grant conversion. And, and as, as I've told the board numerous times, we, we cannot do grant, and we, we cannot make grants for any purpose. That's, that's the reason we have to contract nonprofits and such. So based on what has been presented to the board at, at, at the current time, I'm advising that the county does not have the authority to do this appropriation for the purpose that, that's stated, that was stated for, by both the state budget and the, uh, the document that Mr. Van Gheens has been using. And, and considering this, and, and just to give the board as much leeway as possible, I, I think, I think it'd be possible to turn this into an economic development project, but it would be risky in the sense that what the CDF is trying to do is assist 10 companies to each create 10 jobs within five years. That was the description of what the CDF wants to do. A, as you all recognize, up until CARGIL, we didn't do CARGIL, but until CARGIL, we have, our economic development incentive agreements have always involved the creation of jobs. We pay at the end of a year for a company that has met the obligation to create and maintain those jobs. This is a, a, a reverse of that, that the CDF is not creating any jobs, it's assisting companies to create jobs and they're, you know, asking for the money now for something that's gonna happen in the future. And it would have to have a clawback provision requiring the CDF to pay us back. I mean, it would be a contract for economic development with, with, with the CDF. I mean, there's, there's a way that I can make that meet the legal requirements for economic development agreement, but I, I advise the board, it is still a risky endeavor because the CDF, I think Mr. Van Gheens is the only staff person he's mentioned and the, um, the only source of funding they have is what's provided by the state, what's provided by us, what, if it is provided by the city. So that, that's, that's the situation.
Commissioner Adams?
I guess I've got a couple of questions. One is they want us to put our money upfront, but they're gonna give theirs as it happens or whatever.
It's just periodic, I mean, that means.
Please let me finish. Don't interrupt, please, thank you. I, I get there.
Yes, that's, 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 I, I have the language from staff.
The second thing is though, I thought the last time it came here, we wanted you to go to the delegation or to the general assembly to have discussion about how to work this thing. Did we have that? That was one of, that was one of the things, because that was one of the things I talked about is the delegation, because it, it seemed like they rushed to do it. It's just a matter of how to get this thing done. Uh, because one thing, we don't wanna leave this money on the table, but we also don't wanna put, um, uh, taxpayer money at risk. So did we have any of those discussions? I did not.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chairman Faircliff, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the, for the raise. Uh, my question, and I missed the early discuss, discussions, so forgive me, but is this, is it in, is it somewhere in the statute that this state will provide this money even periodically or however they provide it, that there is a matching requirement? Is that what I'm understanding? And if so, what is the, the matching requirement?
It, the language is that the Office of State Budget Management shall disperse the state funds provided in this section to the foundation that Mr. Van Gheens asked for on a periodic basis, contingent upon the foundation raising an equal amount of non-state funds and, and the capital that is by December 31st, 2022.
Mr. Van Gheens?
I would just share that the state is prepared to release all the funds to the CDF upon confirmation that they have been matched. confirmation that they have been matched. It would be a single drawdown to provide those funds, so they can be put out to these businesses, with our goal of growing minority-owned companies that are locally owned that can provide goods and services to institutions like Cumberland County and the city. We're also completely agreeable to the contingencies that Mr. Moorefield have put forward regarding the clawbacks, these loans will be securitized by capital and other legal agreements, and should they be deployed, should the companies not create the jobs reform, the requirement to repayment is something we can definitely understand and can agree to.
But how are they going to do that if they have no money?
The assets being purchased would be collateralized, with the county being roughly 25% of the loan, the assets being acquired, be they vehicles and the like, that would all have to be worked into the actual computation and the recourse for these loans.
But that wouldn't be, I wouldn't want the cars, I want my money back.
And...
I want the cars back. I want that, I want my money back, if I got a clawback, I want the money back. So I'm trying to see if the, if the foundation is not capitalized, a clawback is useless, Rick.
That's why I said I can give you something that would suffice for economic development, I'm saying it's very risky, but, and I made this clear to Mr. Van Gheens, we are not contracting any businesses, if we were, we would do this like a normal economic development now, we're contracting with the CDF, so the CDF is the only entity that would have, that have the obligation to pay the money back to us.
Understood.
Okay. But there's, but the only source of funds, as you said, Mr. Adams, the only source of funds they have are whatever the county provides, the city provides, or the state provides.
Commissioner Adams.
But in that statute, though, it doesn't require the city or the county to do it, they were supposed to raise some funds to be able to do it, wherever those funds came from.
Well, this, the language in this statute did not contemplate that this would have been private funding, because I don't think they would put together a statute that violated the Constitution requirement, so that's, it did not contemplate.
So did you contemplate it coming from government?
Oh.
Commissioner Faircliff.
I'm not even sure of my question now. Okay. Are we under, Robert, maybe you can help, are you under some kind of gun here to get this done by the end of the month?
Yes, and to...
Okay, that's all I needed, yes.
Yeah, but if I...
That's all I needed, Robert.
Okay.
Okay. All right, what I'm asking then is, if we're inclined to do this, can we put enough contingencies in there that we're not putting any actual money out until the state does?
As I...
Or do we have to just give them money and then hope everything goes well for them to get this done by the 31st? Or do we have to, can we pledge a contingent on the state spending their money first, since we're matching, as I see it?
All I've got is what I presented to you, it just says, money this rate, the money raised, consists with the money raised by December 31st.
Not just pledges, but actual money in hand, is that what you think?
I think most nonprofits regard pledges as money being raised, yeah, I mean, but I don't think, the way this statute, this excerpt from the budget is written, it was not contemplated that this was something other than private money, I'm just, I mean, because, I don't think they would have, I don't think the bill drafting folks in legislature would have drafted a bill that they knew would violate the Constitution.
And how does it violate the Constitution?
Because this Equity Venture Capital Fund is described as being a mechanism by which the county money would convert to 100% grants, and we are legally prohibited from making grants to anyone, constitutionally prohibited.
Making grants.
We can't give away money. We hear that time and time again.
We give it away for, we give it away in the form of tax incentives, right, I mean, for jobs. Yeah, we do, that's how we normally do it.
We do economic development agreements, and that is part of the purpose, creating jobs.
Right.
Yeah, but that's not, but the companies that we do that with have an obligation to create jobs, or, you know, I mean, and we have a contractual mechanism.
So the problem here is the conduit.
Well, it's not as, well, the conduit is a big problem, but it's just the language in the statute itself, I mean, the language in the equity fund itself says that this money would be used for grants, and I think Ms. Van Gheens said they'll change that language, I mean, that has to be done, but I'm just talking about what we have right now.
Commissioner Adams.
Trying to make this work. Is it possible to, because they do have funds, because we take hours back, to give it, to, for, to go to economic development, economic development can then, in terms of what they do with those funds, can contract with the foundation?
We'd have to contract with economic development to do, to create these jobs.
Well, economic development is not going to be what the county is, so...
I mean, you're talking about the FEEDC.
Right, if we give the money to FEEDC, not necessarily for this purpose, but we grant them that amount of money, and then if they in turn match that with the, what's called, and if there's a clawback, I mean, we fund them, we just take our money back. As I mean, I'm trying to get as creative as possible, that's the only way that I see this work, so I both know that to give it to the foundation, but if we can, and I think that quickly, if you can go through FEEDC and they can do their board, because they got a meeting next week, and then they can make that, I don't know Vicki, is that, and because we give them six hundred, eight, how much must we give them, eight hundred thousand? How much we give?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Our allocation to FEEDC each year?
It's around, close to five, four eighty-four.
So that would take three years.
Right, three years, but I could get it back, though, I mean, it's, I'm at least entitled to be getting something back, if I do it to the foundation, they have no resources, there is no, nothing to get back. We created FEEDC, I mean, that's, that's our, that's our, I mean, I'm not, I'm not the attorney, Rick, so I mean, you have to determine whether that works or not, I don't know. And y'all can talk about that, but that seems to be, to me, the only way that this gets done, I couldn't vote the other way.
As I said, the other aspect of this is, I mean, I've only talked to the city attorney, and she doesn't know, again, as I said, I didn't know whether the board would approve this or my, her counsel would approve this, so it could be just us and not the city.
Well, I mean, it would be continued, I mean, it doesn't matter, because if they don't get the other money, our money's not, I mean, they just have to give our money back, I mean, because it says get both of the money, oh, no, it says in, in...
It's just the amount that's raised.
The amount raised. I don't necessarily worry about what the city has, but what I'm saying is, though, that's the only way I see this works, and you may want to talk to them to see if that works for them, too.
Commissioner Faircliff.
Okay, in as much as there is enough of a, I won't say controversy, but there are too many, too many questions here that we can't get answered for this to go on a consent agenda, so I would just move that we table item C to the December 19th meeting, and allow the attorney to have time to answer these questions, and see if we can pull this thing together in time to meet Robert's deadline.
One moment, Commissioner Keith. Mr. Van Gheens?
I would just want to share from a procedure standpoint, we have advertised as required for an economic development expenditure for a public hearing that evening, so that would be on your agenda that night, unless you should choose to withdraw and not have that working with counsel on there, and perhaps later, Vice Chairman Adams, I did speak with the legislature, and I can share some of that about the extensions we've got.
Commissioner Keith.
It doesn't have to be unanimous, and to get on the consent agenda, if we are asking for additional information or how the, if it's any concern, how the city's going to approach it, we can still, we have a public hearing scheduled, we can still keep it on the agenda and have discussion about it that night.
Well, you keep it on the agenda, but...
Yeah, right, we have the discussion, we have time to get more information.
My suggestion would be to keep it on the agenda, there's a public hearing scheduled anyway, and I will follow up on Commissioner Adams' suggestion about funding it through the FEEDC, that, I like that better than the other approach, and I'll see what we can do.
Can we make sure that we have all that information before?
Yes, I mean, if I could get, if I can make, if I can make that work, I'll have a contract for your consideration on the 19th.
Please, and thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Well, it seems like Mr. Van Gheens at least talked to the delegation, I'd like to hear if they went there.
Yes, we had, the way this all came down, the uniqueness of this has posed some challenges, it's an aggressive concept, there is typically a rules committee meeting, and the Senate and the House get together, and that is where we were looking for additional time, we did not know when we asked for this, that there'd be a hard December 31st and some of these things. Unfortunately, it seems like the House and Senate are not able to come to terms on having that, but we did, I have pursued it every three to five days since, even prior to our first conversation on this, so I'm sorry that we weren't able to do that, it's just the reality we're living in politically.
Thank you, sir. So...
They got their motion over, I think.
Okay, so is there a motion for matching the funds for the Community Development Foundation, or Economic Development? Make the motion.
I got the motion to approve matching funds to Community Development Foundation, just to get it going.
Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and properly second, all of those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Faircliff, Vice Chairman Stewart, and Commissioner Keith.
All those opposed?
Commissioner Counsel, Vice Chairman Adams.
Well, I, yeah, I just don't understand what we did.
I don't.
Because, I mean, you just made...
I made a motion to put it on the agenda so we get the session.
But no, it was a motion to approve the money to give it to them.
Right, but it's going to go to the full, it's just at the work session now, it's still, we've got the full board to vote again, and if Rick comes up with a better scenario that you have, we can always vote it that way. But I was just trying to get it on the agenda, not accept that public...
Well, that's what I'm saying, put it on, just make a motion, put it on the agenda, my business.
It already is on the agenda for a public hearing. It's already on the agenda for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Van Gheens.
Can I get a clarification? Things may have changed, it used to be that it required a unanimous vote to get it on the consent, not on the agenda, it's only consent.
Item of business, not...
So it's going to go on item B?
Yes.
Okay.
We can talk about it all night long.
I understand, that's fine.
Not all night, but, Madam Manager, we'll move on to item 4D.
What is it?
The Emergency Watershed Protection Program is a recovery effort aimed at relieving imminent hazards to lives and property caused by natural disasters. Because of impacts from Hurricane Florence, Cumberland County will be using the EWP or Emergency Watershed Protection Program funding to help mitigate watershed impairments. Our Engineering and Infrastructure Director, Jermaine Walker, will present this item.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Walker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and to the Commissioners. So this project, one thing that was left out of your memo is, this is a two-phase project, and so the funding, the approval for the formal bid is for Phase One of this project. This project, as you can see, was advertised twice, and the second time, we received the qualifying bid from Carolina Cleaning and Restoration for 910,000. One thing I forgot to recognize is Mr. Wayne Collier, who is here, who's the chairman of the Soil and Water Conservation Board. And so, something else, just to point out, the county did receive federal funding from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, 1.168 million, and then additional 855K in state funding. And so, the 910K for Phase One, we estimate 700,000 for Phase Two, which is for stream, bank, and soil stabilization, and then the additional funding is broken out for engineering design, contract administration fees, and then also a small amount for contingency. And we're requesting that this may move forward to the December 19th Board of Commissioners meeting as a consent agenda item, and once the contract is approved for legal sufficiency, excuse me, and passes the financial audit, that the chair be allowed to endorse the contract on behalf of the county.
Thank you, are there any questions?
Where is Phase One?
Phase One is 29 locations, and it's...
Is it throughout the county, inside the city and outside the county, the whole county?
Throughout the county, yes, sir, but the majority of it is east of the river, for the most part, is that correct, Mitch?
There's some blue to the west, but there are also ones to the east.
And Phase One is to the east?
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out...
Phase One is pretty much scattered off of the county.
Oh.
There's multiple sites all over the county, one up around Bass, right up there towards the western part of the county, and there's several, like the Beavers and Free Period, there's several in the Gray Street area, and off along the line there, they're just scattered off the road.
Yeah, they're all dealing with the Beavers, too, the Beavers blocking up everything.
Oh, I'm sure.
Commissioner Keith.
Madam Chair, I'm going to support this, but this is, I'll go back to the same thing, how's it advertised? How are we getting competition? We just had something for community development that went out three times, nobody bid on it, and this is a million-dollar project, and if we're just taking the minimum of putting it in the Fayetteville Observer or on the website, we have to be better, because competition keeps prices down. And if there's only one or two people bidding on this, then we may be paying, because they're the only ones that see it, we've got to get better at communicating with our contractors. And again, I'm going to support this, I wanted to go forward, this hurricane Florence, this is four years now, four years ago that we're trying to get this done now, but we've got to do a better job of advertising to new county business. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if I can get a motion.
I made a motion to approve, second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, item 4E.
I believe the county attorney will present this item.
This item has a lot of documents attached to it, but they're all necessary to substantiate that it complies with the statute, that's why they're in there. It boils down to the three owners of the property that adjoins a one-tenth mile-long section of King Road, south of the intersection of King Road, Rockfish Road, Lakewood Avenue, Lakewood Drive, and, I've got to go down a long ways to get to it, to the resolution. Tony Point Road, and Rockfish, okay, they've asked that the, it is still maintained by the state, it used to be King Road, but King Road, the intersection was changed, and it's just a section that still lies in there, I mean, it is still King Road, but it used to be the only portion of King Road. But the, they've all asked that the DOT to abandon that, because they all have contracted with a developer to develop all that, those parcels into a commercial shopping center with a major grocery store and multi-use parcels. The statute says that if the board finds that all the, this is a reasonable request in the best interest of the people of the county, then you can adopt a resolution requesting DOT to abandon it. DOT won't do start the process itself, it has to come through the Board of Commissioners. And that's true, even though this lies in the city of Fayetteville, all this property's in the city of Fayetteville. So this is, in the years I've been here, you've only done this one other time, it's only one other request, but this is very straightforward, it meets the statutory requirements, and if you have any questions, I recommend approval.
Who owns it, then? If DOT abandons it, they don't build the shopping center, who owns it, who takes care of it?
That, that's not part of that, it's not addressed by statute, I don't know how they work that out. No, I mean, it's just not in the statute, all I can do is follow, yeah. Under a typical abandonment process, it would go, right away, be split onto, the building properties on each side, but that's not in the statute, it's just, this is not abandoning it, it's abandoning it from maintenance.
I understand.
They'll probably come back, probably have to, I think they'll have to go back to the city and ask for a closure, that's what they'll probably do the next step. It's in, you don't have the authority to close it, you only have the authority to request abandonment of maintenance.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Or we can have a motion.
DOT's request to abandon State Rule 4089, King Road.
Is there a second?
Second. And that resolution, if you adopt that resolution, that covers our thing.
Yes, the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second, all of those in favor?
Yes.
It has to move those to the consent agenda, both of those last two items matter.
Yes. Madam Manager, item 4F.
County attorney will present this item as well.
Got to get here for this one, this is, next one is a peaceful request for clean non-natural gas, it's actually a contractor that does this work for them, but that's, it is for the benefit of clean non-natural gas. And, I can move this by my finger, right?
Okay. Can you put it with the, where it shows the, the. Two aerial view of it, it shows the buildings and stuff.
On the layers, third one.
Okay, yeah, I see it there.
Mr. Morfield, could you speak up when you're up there, please?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm just trying to get it set up.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go. And I'll, I'll, I'll just do this by, by pointing them out, this, this try, this is in the industrial park, the, I guess it's easy, right, this is Walmart Distribution Center, to kind of give you a, a perspective on it. This parcel's land is, is the site that we call the Sand Hills Road Site, it's one hundred fifty-nine acres, this, this large parcel here, it goes well down here, that, that's the one hundred fifty-nine acres, that's actually one of the parcels that Skyrim LLC got, uh, here to purchase, but they didn't purchase it, so it's, it's still county property. This parcel is owned by the city of Fayetteville, this is a one point six-four acre parcel owned by the city of Fayetteville, and this little fifty by fifty, fifty by fifty square there is owned by Piedmont Natural Gas, except, can y'all, it's a missing, okay. This is the site of PWC Infrastructure, and PNG has a little substation there for their gas line stuff. This area here, and this, this is another county parcel, this, this parcel. This parcel here is, is a county-owned parcel in, in the, in the industrial park, it's about thirty-three acres, and this strip running along here are a series of easements, the total width of which is a hundred and seventy feet wide, so, so it really, it really has an impact, particularly when it cuts across this portion down here. Piedmont Natural Gas is asking for the county to now give it an easement, not ownership, but an easement of a hundred by hundred foot little parcel in the middle of this, that triangle there, for another substation. Their plan is to consolidate the smaller one into the larger one and just have one substation there, and it will enable them to more efficiently serve gas to the, to this park. With the way it's chopped up and, and with this easement stuff, it, it, and I, it's my recommendation that instead of doing that, that the county just work it out to, to square up this corner back here and let Piedmont do whatever they're going to do in that area, I mean, not, not, you know, get rid of this, and square this up, and actually, while we're doing this, go ahead and, and subdivide this away from this one hundred fifty-nine acre tract and add it to this thirty-three acre parcel, the rest of this, because I think it's much more valuable to the thirty-three acre parcel than it is to the one hundred fifty-nine acre parcel, and also, I, I, and if it advised and recommended to the board, I've advised Piedmont that I would, I would not recommend that we do this by an easement. When you have above-ground infrastructure placed there, and this is going to be equipment, it's going to be fenced in, it, it is absolutely not usable for parking or driving or rental purpose, so I've told them, my recommendation would be that we do a, just a sale to them, it would have to be.
Tell me about it.
By the way, it would have to, it would be a sale, it would have to be done, you know, subject to upset bid process if they make an offer, but, but my, my recommendation is the board is, I, I really think that this area back here now is pretty much unusable in, in terms of it making some use for either this parcel or this, with this other stuff in here, so even if we cut off a little bit here, you still got this odd thing, so my recommendation would be that we have, subject to being properly surveyed and stuff, but cut off this area, just square this up back here and just sell that to Piedmont, and it would be subject to upset bid price, they've offered ten thousand dollars for the easement, but that's, I mean, we can, you know, still talk about that, but, and, but while we're doing this, we, we would not survey this, but we, but we need to go ahead, they're going to have to survey it, so we'll have a boundary to work from, but we, we would go ahead and cut this off maybe in the middle of this easement and transfer, and, and the rest of this is this, and take it away from this, because there's still going to be a hundred and about forty-eight acres left in here, and this, it makes this up to about thirty-seven acres, so I, I think it would be, and I've talked to Robert Van Gans, he agrees that that would be a, a better. Ooh, that other little piece right there to the, to the left of that, come down, 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 right there, that piece. That is Walmart Drive. No, the whole, yeah, all of, that land right there. That strip is Walmart Drive. No, no, the land right behind, the side. I don't know why it's locked over there.
Nice question.
Great. Rick, I keep me.
You mean next to the city?
I did, that's right, yeah, that, um, the piece right there, that piece, Danny did it right there. No, 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 see where the arrow is right there, that, that hole right there. This is, this, this is Walmart. You see this? This, this.
That's part, that's part of the area.
Okay, that's part of all of that, okay, it goes down into Walmart, okay, I got you. It just doesn't show. They, they just cut this out for the road right. I got you, I got you.
Rick, I, I follow you all the way on this, it makes sense what you're doing, the, the easements and natural verified, but why do you want to give up all that, if you're going to divide the lots, that, a lot across the street, across a hire, why do you want to give up any land, I mean, that's a pretty significant piece of land.
Well, we, we can cut it, we, that's why I brought it, bring it to the board.
The city will trade it back to a mile and yards or something.
Cut it back wherever they, they want to, yeah, I mean, we can cut it back, they only want a hundred by hundred.
Right, you're, you're giving them a thousand.
This is, there's one point four three acres in that.
Forty thousand.
And, and, and I think that'll work too, if we, if we subdivide it like that, you know, if, if we just add it to the back of this parcel here, and I think, and Piedmont, I think, would be willing to do that, but sell it to them not doing easement on it.
Right, that makes, that makes sense, but.
Lot cleaner, yeah.
They, they also wanted another thirty, they wanted to buy a thirty-foot strip beside this to keep adding to that for, to put a road on, and I, I just told them I would not recommend that, and they dropped that. They are now, they have a dirt road, it was over there, twenty foot easement, meanders around to their, to that, I'm, I'm actually going to, if we can work this out and survey, see if we can get this worked out for them to use this easement down here, because they have a gas line easement, now that they have a road on, they, they, so they're still crossing this, you know, there, it's not, not a permanent impediment, but it's there.
I think you sold it, you sold it.
So, so what I'm asking for is to, we'll put, you know, I don't have, they want to get surveyed and stuff, but if we move this far, then with, with cutting off, that's what they need back here behind the city lot, and remove that, so, is that, and I, I can make, I, I, if that's what the board's direction is, I, we can get that together, I can get that worked out.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
And, and this would just be following the County Attorney's recommendation on this, because this is not a final thing, all right?
Okay, it's been approved and properly second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Voting in.
All those in favor? Can't let her see.
Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Faircloth, voting unanimous.
Y'all playing on that.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Item four G.
On November twenty-ninth, the Board of Commissioners and the County Manager received the attached memo from Sheriff Wright requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve retention incentives for the detention center staff to be funded from a grant provided by our telecommunications contractor. The sheriff wants the incentives, I, I will say that I've talked with Sheriff's Office, and they do want the incentives approved before the holidays to have some impact, although they realize that they can't be paid before the holidays. The proposal from the sheriff is describing the memo, memo attached to the agenda, Board of Commissioner approval is required because the sheriff would like to use funds for the incentives of six hundred dollars per employee in the detention center. The estimated cost is, for a hundred fifty-five detention center staff is approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand. The incentives would be funded from the two hundred thousand dollar grant provided by the telecommunications contractor. The other items mentioned in the memo are, don't require Board of Commissioner approval, only the pay, it's a pay item, so the Commissioners have to approve. The Sheriff's Office has been made aware that the bonuses cannot be processed through payroll until January because of other payroll actions in December. Mr. Haney mentioned the, the bonus, that is one of them, as well as the paying, paying of longevity pay. The sheriff requests this item be moved forward to the December nineteenth meeting. If the board is inclined to do that, I recommend also adding language that employees would be eligible if they remain with the detention center through the pay period immediately preceding the date, the incentive is paid, and that's consistent with how other bonuses are paid currently.
I have a motion to approve. I second. I'm sorry. Any questions, comments?
Quick comment, question. Based on our earlier discussion, does the sheriff have the authority? He, he got funded for those nine hundred and seventeen positions in the detention center, he's asking for a hundred and sixteen, the average detention officer makes forty thousand dollars a year, there is a lot of unrealized income that is not being used, does he have the authority to use that money to give bonuses and retention to other employees?
The funniest person making sense, no.
Why not?
Not, not necessarily, I would say that's because the County Manager is responsible.
Look at the consent, man.
The County Manager is responsible for the pay policies within personnel policy under the Personnel Ordinance.
Ms. Evans, can you speak that again, because I'm sure they're going to be listening, keep some for the listening audience.
Okay, the answer is no, because the County Manager has the authority through the Personnel Policies as established through the Personnel Ordinance, the sheriff does not.
But, but the County Manager could authorize the sheriff to do that?
Well, she could do it, if we, if we told her, yeah, if we told her to do it, I guess.
Does that mean she couldn't do that for our own employees either? She could do it, right?
Um, to do a, it has to be budgeted, yes, and, um.
I don't think she feels comfortable doing it without, without Ms. Boob saying it, I don't think she feels comfortable.
I would say, I think she does, but historically, those incentives, bonuses, those types of pay actions have always come to the Board of Commissioners for decision. Rick, am I wrong?
I, I guess the best way to describe it is departments put together budgets and submit to the County Manager, except for all the personnel portion, that is done by, I guess, overseen by the County Manager's Office or the Finance Office. The only thing departments can do, including the sheriff in this instance, even though it's not a department, is request additional positions.
And, and I'll also say this too, as far as the funding that is available through the vacant positions, one thing that you have to remember for fiscal year twenty-three, and it also is done the same way in fiscal year twenty-two, positions were not budgeted at a hundred percent, they were budgeted at a, at a, at a lesser percentage in order for us to be able to fund the COLA, and so some of that, some of that funding has already been used for, for that purpose.
But there could be a hundred and sixteen thousand still, we're not over though.
You've got a hundred and seventeen vacant positions in the county.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to make you do it on the spot, but.
And I have not, I have not looked at it.
I think everybody's in agreement to do it, it's just where it comes from, I guess it's where you.
And, and my point was, if we got a telecommunications contract grant, I mean, if it's not being used, it's not going to be used as a telecommunications grant.
I mean, how does that work? I mean, if you got a grant, I don't know, can you move money around?
The telecommunications contractor provides the service for inmates in the jail, and so we contract with that provider to provide the communications, they get revenue from that.
Are we talking about like a Verizon, Sprint, a Sailor phone company?
No, it's not a cell phone company, the name of the company is in the memo.
Except they're giving a little bit of a, they're giving a, a, a money offering to the sheriff and let us have the contract.
We good to go there.
Yeah.
I got it now.
I'm going to shoot, tell them again, ain't my money. I'm moved to approve.
I'm fine.
I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay.
Okay, there's, there was a motion on the floor by Commissioner Faircloth that was seconded by Commissioner Counsel, all those in favor?
I got a question.
So, you're second?
I second.
Oh, no, you already seconded your question.
My question is, is this to be immediately or as soon as possible?
It, I've discussed with Ms. Evans, and we believe it can be paid out in January.
January.
Right, it can't be paid in December because of the other, it can't be paid in December because we're already paying bonuses and longevity pay.
But you have some other thing.
We have a shorter timeframe in order to transmit, we have a shorter timeframe in order to transmit.
But you wanted to have some kind of, how long they stay or something?
Yes, so it is.
I don't know if that was a part of.
It is in the agenda packet that, if the board is inclined to approve it, which I hear you are, then I recommend including language that the employees would be eligible if they remain with the detention center through the pay period immediately preceding the date, the incentive is paid, consistent with how other bonuses are paid.
Okay, and that's what I second.
And took you to the consent agenda.
Okay, so it's been moved and properly seconded to move this to our consent agenda on December the nineteenth, uh, did we vote? All in favor?
Unanims.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I point out one thing? Commissioner Jones and myself do not have access to the agenda packet because our computers were not ready, so we don't have that, we don't have the background that everybody does, so when we, when we're asking questions, it's not because we didn't read anything, we don't have anything to read.
I apologize for that, and we'll try to fix that as soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
Just follow my lead, you're okay.
Hey, I know that, I know that.
Are there any other items of business for this agenda session?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no, we got, we took that. Well, our monthly reports, we do not have, Commissioner Jones and Faircloth do not have access to that information, so we will go ahead and, and they will get that, and then they'll be able to go back. We are now back in open session, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Second.
It's been most, motion to adjourn and properly second, all those in favor?
Unanims.